Great, thank you and welcome to the Rockport Select Board Meeting for Monday, August 30th. We do have a quorum here this evening, so we will proceed. Before we did get started, I did just want to take a moment on behalf of the Select Board to express our condolences to the Rollins family on the recent loss of Scott Rollins. Scott and his family are long-term residents of Rockport, small business owners, and Scott was a longtime member of the Volunteer Fire Department in Rockport. He was a lieutenant. We thank Scott and his family for all of his service to the community and also to the legacy that he's left behind. His son Greg and grandson Levi are still very, very involved in the Rockport Fire Department, so we thank him and his family for the service. Our thoughts are with Sandra, his son Greg and grandson and grandchildren, daughter Terry, and Scott's extended family and friends, so I did want to let you know that we are thinking of your family and certainly appreciate all of the involvement and dedication that Scott gave to the community. With that, we will go into our action items. We have two action items this evening. One is to act on the ARPA application, and then we are acting on our warrant articles. So first up, we will act on the APRA application. John, do you want to give us a walkthrough of what we are requesting and what you and the team have been working on?
Yes, thank you. Yes, it's a robust package, let me say. The the team is far and wide of working together with the MIDC, our friends in Camden, Rockland, and Thomaston, who are jointly supporting our applications of the county. There's over 20 letters from business people in our region that are supportive of this effort. And you know, the request is, you know, to go towards to the county for their, some of their $7.7 million of ARPA funds that have been dedicated to Knox County. The county commissioners will have opened, just as for those who are unfamiliar with this process, they've opened a an RFP process or a request process for their grant funds for projects within Knox County. And this, this is really meant to also fall within the guidelines of ARPA, ARPA, for those who go there. And there are some limitations, a great number of limitations on what those funds can be used for. But primary, one among the primary uses of that is broadband, infrastructure and expansion. And so this effort to have a a Rockport-focused build of broadband infrastructure, a request of $750,000 to really focus a build here in Rockport. And really grateful to have the support of our neighboring communities and recognizing the needs of Rockport and Rockport's residents. But also the businesses in Rockport but around Rockport to see the value of that. Because obviously, the value here is for us to be a tech pole of sorts to really allow for expansion beyond our borders. But this first build out would predominantly actually 100% support Rockport. And so this, this application, again, it's just the first phase. I expect many conversations with the county through that process, but this is the first step.
Yeah, I just wanted, I mean, I think the application is a really, I mean, you've heard it all from John, but it's, it's just exciting to have this level of support from the entire community, and it is a project that benefits all of Rockport. You know, it's, it's not focused on a particular area of Rockport. This is one that benefits all of our residents. So it's exciting to be able to be part of that.
Good. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I move the board approve the application to the Knox County Commissioners for funding from the American Recovery Plan Act as presented.
John, I have you for a second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor and we'll do by roll call because we're on Zoom, so John, I have you as a yes. Denise?
Yes.
Okay, and I am also a yes. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric isn't. Okay, Eric, thank you. I did not have you in. Was that a yes from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and John, the deadline is to file that tomorrow, correct, at the end of the day?
I bet there'll be several trees killed in the process of carrying a big heavy packet to the courthouse tomorrow.
Perfect, that sounds great. All right, moving along in my agenda after I get past this big application is acting on the warrant article. So John, I will turn it back to you to walk us through what we need to review and ultimately vote on.
Sure, no, absolutely. So this is, there was some, some, I guess it was unclear in terms of timelines, but it's clear now. So 60 days prior to the election, the town must order the valid articles ordered. These are the articles that presented to you in the format of a draft warrant, not asking tonight for the approval of the draft warrant or only for the approval of the questions. There will be a subsequent meeting where these, these will then turn into a warrant. And subsequent to that, there will be some, the public hearing held on these questions. So that's later on the process. The only thing we have to concern ourselves with tonight are the questions themselves. There are four questions. And I can walk you through each of those. Let me just bring up the handy-dandy little share screen tab because that makes everybody happy. And here we go. So what we have here, Article 2 authorizes the Select Board to enter into a contract with engineering design professionals for their documents for the future consideration of a new fire station in West Rockport in terms of conditions that the Select Board determine in the best interest of the town. For those, this is obviously related to the West Rockport Fire Station conversation that we talked about in your July meeting, and this is a process that has been moving forward. This would just start the next phase of that. It does not approve the building. It does not approve the full expenditure that was discussed at your prior meeting. It's only for the design itself and to put the design in a place where it could be put out to bid, so that then the voters can make a decision upon that price. And so there's not just a design, but also a cost that they can make decisions on. Do you want me to go without, through all of them right now, Michelle, or do you want me to wait until, go one by one? What's best for you?
Let's go one by one. So that was Article 2. Do we have any questions on the live stream or anything coming in? I just want to make sure if anyone has a question, we're able to answer it.
No questions.
Okay, then let's go on to Article 3.
Okay, so Article 3 says, sorry, I had the wrong screen open here. There we, okay, there we go. Article 3, shall the town authorize the Select Board to enter an agreement with New Height Group for the purposes of a riding and market survey to evaluate feasibility and develop conceptual site program and to work with professionals to create conceptual renderings for the former Rockport Elementary School site on terms, terms and conditions of the Select Board determined to be in the best interest of the town for some not to exceed $35,000. So this, this article, in a nutshell, effectively ties the town to, allows the boards to enter an agreement with New Height Group, which is the group whom the RES Task Force and the Economic Development Committee both support, working with and establishing a plan effectively for the Rockport Elementary Site. This will also involve, although it's not necessarily identified here, but there is public process that is also engaged through this. So there is, this is the start of effectively, what would be in some places, you would have a master plan for a property like this. Effectively, this is doing a master plan, but you're doing it with a, an entity that has experience in the world of developing properties such as these. And so it's, it's somewhat providing answers to the test, as I like to say. So I think this is an interesting piece. Hopefully, all the boards should have received the letters from both the Economic Development Committee's Chair as well as the RES Task Force Chair indicating the support from those committees for this article.
John, I had someone ask me if, because it just seems like such a small amount of money to be going to the voters for, is there, just because we didn't say something about this category in the budget is why, I mean, could this have been $5,000 and we'd still have to go to the voters?
Yeah, so we, it asked our town attorney about this question, and his, that was exactly, that was exactly the answer though. So that we hadn't encompassed this in any other articles. And $35,000, unfortunately, there really wasn't another line item that said, well, it's potential, future, you know, professional services anywhere nearing this, this sort of amount. But $35,000 and it would come out of the unassigned fund balance, which obviously is another item that's not applied to it. So it's, it's, you know, it is an item that probably we should, I wish we could put aside a year ago, but.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's some way in the future to have some, you know, I don't want to call it a slush fund, but you know, some, because the timing works out okay here. We're not really held up that much, but if the timing were a couple of months different, you know, either we'd have to be faced with having a special town meeting to be able to move forward, or we'd be SOL and just, you know, it just doesn't seem like a very efficient way to be able to operate if, if there are alternatives.
No, I mean, there is, there is a town manager has a contingency with which, but it's not even a third of this amount, so even that wouldn't be sufficient, so.
Yeah.
After we changed the storyline, I was a little bit aware of trying to make sure we, we didn't overspend those monies too early in the process, but you know, I think you're right. I mean, that's something to look at as you go into the budget, other, other places that we could ensure we could use this, as you said, it's not not a ton, but it's also a little bit more than what we'd have for something like this that we could move around, so.
Yeah.
Can we put them into the capital planning budget for its own process, you know, create a new bucket for the RES so that in the future, at least we're pre-budgeting, I mean, we pre-budget every other big item in a way. Not a vehicle or building, but it is a, something that has to be done.
It's an asset of the town that we want to try to maximize, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we, it probably gonna need another round of things. You know, I do know, New Height was hoping, you know, once we get to get through the first phase that they can get enough out of it that it's not going to cost us a fortune. But I'm expecting at least, at least that much again, probably twice as much, I would imagine, over the course of the project. But who knows? I don't, I mean, we don't know yet until we get through this phase, but I mean, could we not call it a land improvement or a land development fund or something kind of like a capital project that we could get into the budget, not just a contingency fund somewhere?
Right, no, I think that's, that's a good thought, Eric. I mean, I think partly also this is, I don't want to say it caught us flat-footed, but you know, I think a lot of the conversation regarding New Height and how New Height would work with the town, this, this generated and probably, you know, you and Denise can probably speak this a little better, but that, that concern of, okay, we've gone this far, we like this group. Now how do we convert that into the next iteration working with the town? You know, have we conducted an RFP? Have we, you know, ensured that, that we've, you know, checked those boxes? And so it was through that, we said, oh boy, okay, now, how do we do this? And of course, you know, usually when you work with a developer, the idea is, well, you hand over the property and there's, there's this profit to be made from the developer. This was a situation where, and part of this was out of New Height Group and their own genesis over the last couple of weeks of saying, well, what if we, what if we turn this on its head and we said, we provide you for a fee the plan, and then that would allow you some jumping off point, so.
Right.
I think you're right. I think if we had more time, you know, we, we front-load this apart and we say, okay, well, this is where we could go. I think this is probably just reacting to, how do we navigate it? Yeah.
We can get this happening partway through Phase 1, we should have an idea if there are going to be further costs, and we should be able to get that into the budgeting in the next phase, even if it's something that comes up closer to the end of that process. I mean, because if we start, if they start in December, January, February, you know, they're gonna get through, they're gonna, we can kind of get a feel, I think, at that point. By the time we get it into February and March or through the budgeting process, we should know if we're gonna have to come up with more money. I mean, ideally, what you're saying is we turn over the property and they build it and they make their money on the sale of whatever is built, which is kind of how we were discussing it anyway. So this may be, you know, really all we have, but I should at least plan that we need more.
And I, just to add to that, I think I look at this sum of money is, is partly also, it's this is an investment for the, for the voters for whatever that future determination is, that vote to decide. You know, will we work with a developer? Will we go this way, go that way? This is, these are the funds to allow the voters peace of mind or enough knowledge and, and enough to work with to be able to say they can make an educated decision. You know, and I think that's really what this is, is really providing all of the background information so that the voters can make a good decision to work with New Height Group or to go their own way or, you know, to put a Ferris wheel there. I don't know what it ends up being. But really, to look at a whole bunch of different options, but that will, that should get us, like you said, a long way down the road of understanding.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this is, this is what we need to get it to get a feel of it, and I don't think it's a lot when we're talking about the size of the property and the project scope. So, you know.
Looking at the article and just sort of thinking about the marketing of it to our town residents and wondering whether we should add something sort of to the effect of, you know, so that we can maximize the value of that property for the town residents or something, so they can see, and we all know what we're trying to get to with this. But I'm wondering if we, you know, rather than trying to have newspaper articles explaining it, if even the ballot wording, the wording itself says the end game here is to realize value for the town from this property.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, and is there a way to put in there that this isn't, this is just because it wasn't clarified in their original budget, but we're using unfunded, on whatever that UFB fund is called, too much trap. Yeah, you know, so then people aren't thinking, well, what are they doing, raising money against that? We're already using money we have. So is there a way to word that, where we're not doing a mass marketing campaign that is kind of in the language? I don't know. I don't know what the rules are. I'm just asking. That we're reallocating funds that we already have into this, into this project, something to that where effect?
Right.
I don't, I don't know if that's doable or if it's even makes sense. I just, because a lot of people are gonna say, oh no, I don't want to spend $35,000 more.
Yeah, and that's a good point too, though, because to read that as a voter, you might think that we're spending, I mean, and we are spending another $35,000. But it's money that we already have just in a different fund, right? So I mean, we've, we've, we have that money. We just didn't designate it to RES.
Right.
So I don't know how that works, but yeah, something like that, yep.
Is that, is that, so I'll just read it for those who maybe can't see it. Oh boy, it's the whole, the whole set. Shall the town, do we want to, do you want me to address maybe the first part before I read it? Or basically, I just add it on to the end, for a sum not to exceed $35,000 from the town's unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, that would at least say we're not spending money we haven't, that we didn't have. We're not raising more money. We're using money we have and just allocating it.
We're just allocating it differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this, this, this highlighted section, which was the part that we, we had amended.
Yeah, I like.
Future development potential or development feasibility?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems like a huge, seems like a huge run-on sentence to me, but we can.
And I'm, I'm thinking even something a little more, which only make it worse, but I'm trying to get at the notion that we're trying to realize value from this site for the benefit of town residents, that, that we're not just having fun playing with developers. We're, we're trying to get to the end game here of of sort of benefiting the town, the town's residents by developing the site, that that.
So could you, could you do something after where it says to be in the best interest of the town in order to maximize, blah, blah, blah? And then, then you make a new sentence. So if you go down, I'm pointing like you can see my finger. Select Board determined to be in the best interest of the town to, and then whatever we just said, or whatever we think is the right. Say that again, Denise, because I think it was good.
To real.
To max, to utilize, to maximize, to. Yep.
Maximize the value of the property.
And to benefit Rockport taxpayers or something like that.
Benefit of Rock.
Yep.
Sorry, it cut out on the benefit Rockport.
I said Rockport taxpayers. And then maybe we put a period there and we say, the sum will not exceed $35,000 from the town's unassigned fund balance or something like that. Does that make more sense or get to what you're trying to?
Our English teachers might not love it, but I think it's.
I don't think they would, but.
I think it's getting the key points we were raising in there. I think it works.
I think there has to be a question.
Okay.
Oh, do we have to have a question for the sum as well? Is that one?
I wonder.
Well, could you, could you put, shall the town authorize the Select Board to enter into agreement with the New Height Group not to exceed $35,000 from the town's unassigned fund balance?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, yeah, just move it up there.
Yeah, for the purposes of providing.
There we go. Yep, I think it's all there. It's a mouthful, but it's.
A mouthful, but.
But the voters, I mean, I think the important thing is that the concepts that the voters need to see are there.
Right, and you're getting that $35,000, you know, that's the amount we're not going to exceed. It's going to come from our unassigned fund balance. And here's why. I mean, that, this is what we're doing and here's why, and this is what we're asking of our, of our voters.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or edits to this one?
I think that's better.
Okay.
No, all right, next up.
Next up, Article 4.
Shall the following amendment to Section 405 of the Town Land Use Ordinance be enacted? Section 405 is amended to read, no land use regulation or amendment thereof shall be adopted until after the Select Board of the Town of Rockport have held a public hearing thereon at least 10 days before it is submitted to the legislative body for consideration. Public notice of the hearings shall be made at least seven days prior to the hearing. Amendments to this ordinance shall be considered following a citizen petition pursuant to Article 2, Section 14 of the Rockport Town Charter. Recommendation of the Planning Board or Motion of the Select Board. Petitioners are encouraged to work with and request assistance from the Planning Board so that proposed changes and amendments can be of greatest benefit to the citizens of Rockport. Petitioners shall be responsible for paying for all required advertisements and notifications.
So I'm, go ahead.
No, no, that clarifies the issue of citizen petition.
Okay.
And, and the article and the citation.
And I would just request that we make it has and take out the sick.
Yes, I agree. Okay, questions? Okay, let's move on to Article 5.
Shall ordinance amending the Town of Rockport land use ordinance in Section 700 zoning board of appeals be enacted? This is to the copy orders on file with the town clerk.
So what is this, what are we asking with this one, really?
That one.
Because as a voter, I'd be like, what are you, what are you asking me?
I'm never a fan of these questions because I have no idea what any of them ever mean.
Right, this one is.
Go ahead, sorry Denise, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm not going to be helpful except to say that I know in the past when we've done land use ordinance amendments, they've been like this, where we don't give the text in the warrant. We make the voters go find what we're, I mean, up, up, obviously up above in 405, we did provide them the text of what we're changing.
Personally, I personally, I think we should provide what we're changing. I don't want, I don't want anyone to vote and have to go hunt and peck to see what the changes are. I would, I would like it to be clear.
Second.
Do you have, John, do you have the changes? I felt like they were all these little one-offs throughout.
Yep, let me, let me open it up here.
And I know that's probably not printer-friendly, meaning, you know, you'd have to include all of these, but and, and I would say that maybe we can divide it out by material versus non-material, so.
So that's the explanation for it there.
So there's eight, is there eight of them? Eight changes that need to be made?
Yeah, but they're all, like, some of them are just clean, it's, it's just sort of a mess.
Right.
Through, so it's like just finally editing it in the way it should have been edited.
So are we still doing the newsletter? Maybe we could just include it in that or put it on a front page link of the town webpage?
Yeah, something so it's easier. I agree. I mean, because I think.
I don't think we want this in the warrant.
Yeah.
No, it's too much, but if we're doing the newsletter, we could at least include the wording. And if not doing the word newsletter, then can we somehow put a, a front page link on the website? You know, that's.
Yeah, I agree.
Or something that just takes them to it, because we vote for these all the time and without spending a lot of time, and who has a lot of time to go dig and trying to understand what's changed? It's, it's not right.
No, we'll all get emails from people asking.
Right, and, and I mean, I like this one pager, and I agree, most of them are not what I would consider material changes when you're saying, you know, inconsistent use of Board of Appeals versus zoning board, etc. But I do want to make it easy for people. So to your point, Eric, if it's a link, you know, if we do a, if we do a voting hot button on the, on the website and people can see the link and they can see the articles, whatever, if we put it in the newsletter, I just think we need to make it easy, and I agree, Denise, people are going to be reaching out because the, the question is so vague, and I'm gonna be honest, I've probably been guilty of the pa, in the past of just voting yes without doing the due diligence, but I want at least people to know what the changes are that they are voting in favor or are not approving.
And I think last time around, everything, the couple land use ordinance revisions were all on the front page, you know, the homepage of the town website, you know?
Yeah.
Election period, you know, the month ahead of time, so everybody could see them, but yeah. I think those are good ideas.
Okay. Just gonna add that to our notes. Okay, I'm gonna add that to our notes for. Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Not sure, Bob, Bob Hall drafted those explanations of what the changes are, which is good. I just caught the term busybody. And um that's sort of, I'm not sure we want to have a Town of Rockport, something that suggests people engaged in the process, busybodies.
I didn't see that. Could you pull that, could you pull that back up? Yeah, I agree. We probably, I, I, I don't think we would want to use that term.
Alright, yeah.
It's the eighth, under eight.
Any busybody was seeking a forum? How about any person?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Okay. So what are our next steps? Circling back, John, to what we are really approving here. We are approving the questions. We're not approving.
No, we're not approving.
Anything else?
Yeah, we're not approving, we're approving the four questions that will go on the November ballot. Which will allow the clerk to start ordering ballots with these questions.
With these questions, okay.
The Planning Board has already met, so there's, there's no need for further Planning Board meetings. The Budget Committee will be meeting this week and they'll be handling their recommendations as well as having an organizational meeting on the two questions concerning dollar amounts. Um, obviously the West Rockport Fire Station, those funds are already included in the budget for this. But the RES money obviously is, is a new, new concept, so.
Okay.
But they'll have those two votes and then those will all go on, on the warrant. And recommendations of the board would need to be included as well.
Okay, and then once the warrant is drafted, then we will review that in an upcoming meeting, correct? And we'll.
We just won't, we can remove questions from the warrant, so if, if we could, we can move in that direction, we can't add any questions.
Gotcha, okay.
The sixty day mark, so.
Okay.
If somebody came up with a great idea between now and Thursday, we could still do it. There are great ideas on September eight, unfortunately we're stuck.
Then we won't be able to, okay. Alright, so with that, uh, do we have a motion?
I move the board approve the warrant articles for the November second, twenty twenty-one referendum election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Eric, okay, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go around the table. Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that is unanimous, six oh three PM. Okay, that was our last item on the agenda. Does anyone else have anything else that they needed to cover today? No? Okay, do we get a second?
Second.
Eric, thank you. Any discussion? Alright, we'll go around. Denise?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous. We will adjourn at six oh four PM. Um, our next meeting is Monday, September thirteenth, so have a wonderful three day weekend for those that get a three day weekend coming up. So it seems like a long way away, but it's not really. Alright, have a great night. Thank you. Bye bye.